Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to a special workshop meeting. Today is June 28. Our time is 2:00 P.M. We are scheduled today to go until approximately 4:30. And I think what I'd like to do is go around the table. We won't go into the audience, but I welcome staff and citizens in the audience, of course, at this time also. But let's go around the room. I'm Bob Severance, Mayor of Oak Harbor.
Danny Pogga, Mayor of Porton.
Jim Campbell, City Council.
Nikki Asparza, City Attorney.
Doug Merriman, City Administrator.
Joel Servadia, City Council.
Erica Wassinger, City Council.
Thank you. We have a kind of special workshop meeting in the sense that we'll have a couple of action items at the beginning of the meeting, which we don't do too often. There will be an opportunity during that time for a public hearing. And potentially, we'll hear from the public. And at that point, we would ask them to come to the podium behind me and to speak during a scheduled public hearing or meeting. Please sign in. We do have three that have signed in. And even if you haven't, you would have an opportunity to speak. To ensure comments are recorded properly, please state your name clearly into the microphone. And please limit your comments to three minutes to ensure all citizens have sufficient time to speak. And so our first item is consent agenda. And that's under action items. Unless the council would like to discuss any of those, they will be approved as presented. Okay? I'm seeing no... Okay. We'll move on to the next action item, which is ordinance number 1803, amending Oak Harbor municipal chapter 19.66, variances regarding Gary Oak trees. And I see our senior planner, Cat Grant, coming to join us. Welcome, Cat.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Cat, my senior planner. Okay. For lunch. Okay. So I have a short presentation on this text amendment. So hopefully I'll cover the source of why we took on the amendment and the amendments that we're actually thinking about or proposing at this time. Oh, there we go. Okay. So as the council knows, Gary Oaks in Oak Harbor have its importance. We're named after it. And it's in our revision statement. It's in several goals and policies in our land use element and the environment element. So it's an important tree for us. And so back in 1999, the city hired some consultants to come up with some language to protect the oak trees. And that was adopted with ordinance 898, a copy of which is in your packet. And that ordinance had kind of a comprehensive approach to just generally protecting oak trees, especially on the ones that are located on individual lots and private properties. And it covered, you know, prohibitions on destroying the tree or trimming and variances, what the processes are, and so on. In 2005, when the critical area ordinance was updated for the city, at that time, the city chose to have the Gary Oaks under the critical area ordinance. And therefore, 898 got kind of split into several sections. And some of it was in 2016, which is our environment section of the code. And some of the language that relates to setbacks and structures were put into the zoning code because that's kind of where most of the other setbacks and things are. So the original language in 898 had many clauses there to protect oak trees. But one of the clauses that were in there says that if you had an oak tree outside of the setbacks on a lot, so if it were on the center of the lot, not in the 10 feet or 20 foot setback or the backyard setback, then they didn't need a permit. They can just go ahead and cut the tree down and build a house. That's what 898 did. So when they shifted the language in 2005 to the critical area ordinance, I think the city at that time thought that that was maybe needed in additional, you know, some protection for that. So what they did was they said, well, okay, and that's when the language in 1966 was added, is if there's an oak tree, then the structure can be moved into the setbacks to avoid the tree. And so that was one kind of additional layer of protection they wanted for the oak tree. But when they thought about that language and pushing structures into the setbacks, they thought, well, should there be a limit on how far that structure should go? And so they put a limit on it, which wasn't there in 898. And so they said up to five feet and 10 feet, I think is what the language says, into the setback yards. Now, since that language has been in there, there has been no projects that have come forward to take advantage of that language. So recently, we've had an application in for a variance that is trying to accommodate an oak tree in the Rose Hill development. And the only way they can preserve that oak tree is to push the structure far into the setback farther than what the language would allow. So staff thought that, you know, these, since Oak Harbor is so considerate of protecting its oak trees, it didn't make sense to have those limitations. We didn't see why they would have it. Everything would be determined on a lot-by-lot basis, and that's how variances should be. So why have this general rule that they can only go to a certain distance? So that's kind of where the thought process came for making this change just to this section, primarily because then you can move the other application forward and deal with the variance that they're requesting. So this is a very kind of targeted approach to just this section, just to get rid of the limitations so that we can consider the application. So we wanted to do it in the fastest timeframe. When we identified these limitations, we decided that we should get it in front of the planning commission and city council. So we took the fastest process to get here. In that, while we were doing that, we saw that there were a couple of things in 1966 that made reference to the Board of Adjustments, which I think was there in the 1990s and maybe in the early 2000s, which we don't have anymore. We now have the Hearing Examiner that takes the place of the Board of Adjustments. So we thought we'll kind of just clean up some language. They're not really substantial. They're just little things. So we have a couple of changes that's added just to 1966. So that's kind of the basis for the amendment. It meets the review criteria that's established to consider text amendments. So we recommend that the... And this has been discussed with the planning commission at a couple of meetings. We passed in public comment as well. We went through the process of notifying Department of Commerce for all text amendments and also did a CPO analysis and determined that there's no real significance to this change. So that's just the process. So we recommend that the city council hold a hearing today and at the end of the hearing, close the hearing if you're comfortable to move and adopt the proposed ordinance. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I think before we do that, then we will open the public hearing. And help me out if I get out of the off-schedule here. But we'll open it to the public again. I ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. And it looks like on the list, Mr. and Mrs. Renninger, Laura, do you want to go first?
Mayor's attorney.
Yes.
Tim, just let me know, we're having some technical difficulties with the podium. If Laura would like to just come up here at the table, we can do that. But we're not getting camera and microphone.
We're not getting camera and microphone. Is the camera control broke right now? We can't rotate the camera, so she's actually... What... Do the thing.
Good afternoon. My name is Laura Renninger from the Oak Harbor Gary Oak Society. Today, you will be examining a proposed amendment to city code to allow setback flexibilities when building is planned around Gary Oaks. Our group is asking council to also amend a portion of city code under the section of tree protection to ensure greater success of Gary Oaks surviving the construction phase. Please refer to your packets. We ask the council to direct the planning department to implement new descriptive language. We suggest the following. Before excavation, construction, or other activity is carried out on the property, the owner shall erect a fence not less than four feet high around the trunk. See diagram. Additional barriers shall be maintained at a specified radius from the trunk to protect the tree as stipulated by the city arborist, such as orange plastic fencing, for example. The physical separation described above shall be continuously maintained until the completion of the construction activity. Under the paragraph heading Harm Prohibited, Oak Harbor's existing tree code 20.16-2 states, during building or construction operations, "Suitable protective barriers shall be erected around oak trees and shrubs which may be subject to injury." What does suitable mean in this code section? For a critical habitat species, this language is much too vague. This language does not give the public solid direction to ensure effective protection against risk of tree damage or mortality from machinery, excavation, or deposit of fill, for example. Photographs of construction zones in Oak Harbor show the lack of any visible protection for Gary Oak trees. Photo 1, Melrose Drive Gary Oak, fill and rock debris dumped in front. Photo 2, Ireland Street Gary Oak, roots excavated alongside of tree for utility line. In summary, this code amendment proposal to 19.66 is a good first step in mitigating the risk of Gary Oak trees during the planning process, but still only part of the solution. The goal is to ensure survivability of Gary Oaks throughout the construction process by using science-based tree protection. Our group desires to work with the city planning department so that a reasonable code amendment to 20.16-2 can be achieved in partnership with an amended code to 19.66. We believe this will help to resolve critical shortcomings in the current code. Thus, best practice guidelines for trees can be assured. We are asking council to make a motion to have the planning department revisit 20.16 item number two to implement these guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Renninger. And next would be Mr. Renninger.
Yeah. Good afternoon. My name's Barry Renninger. I've lived in the old part of town for 34 years, and I understand the importance of the Gary Oak conservation. With a degree in construction management, I believe that the guidelines suggested and put forward by the Gary Oak Society truly have merit. What the Gary Oak Society is requesting is considered normal construction practices within a critical area, and it's not something that's not new to the construction industry. If the council moves to adopt the new code language, the oak tree protection in the interest of our oak trees, along with the building construction industry, will be well-served today and for future generations. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the list is Mr. Scott Hampton.
I'm Scott Hampton. I represent Waldron Construction. And we are the ones that have their Gary Oak tree on our property. The motion to amend this issue would greatly help us in supporting new growth to Oak Harbor for economical building. And the one thing that we're finding is to continue to build in the city of Oak Harbor, we're just finding ourselves facing these type of oppositions more regularly. And so adopting the ability to reduce the setbacks would greatly help us in achieving, creating buildable property. And I think that, you know, with the last year and a half that Cat and I have been working together on whether or not we wanted to pursue removing it, you know, we are more on the side of being able to save the Gary Oak trees and work around them. And so the only way to do that would be to allow the setbacks to be reduced. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hampton, do we have anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the city council. I think that would be council, like, yes, Mayor Porton.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Campbell, could you address the concern presented by Mr. and Mrs. Renninger?
Absolutely. So I think one of the ways that Gary Oaks could be protected, especially during construction, is as part of the, considering any variance usually for oak trees and the moving of structures, there will be a requirement for the applicant to provide best management practices for protecting the oak tree, either from an arborist of some sorts or arborists that specialized in construction-related topics. So variances could carry conditions like that when considering these on a case-by-case basis. So, you know, oak trees on lots, the location of them could be different from lot to lot, and the type of protection needed for these trees could be different based on terrain, et cetera. So it's likely that those things can be considered as part of the variance process in granting those variances. Usually, the Hearing Examiner will look into conditions to try and see how you can protect the tree and what the best management practices are during construction to do that.
Just a follow-up. So the determination we made by the arborist, a recommendation of how far the setback would be from the oak tree, because this agenda bill refers to removing the setback distance of five feet, because my main concern is about if the removal of the setback will have the right impact on the tree itself, that the developer can go as far as to have an impact destroying the root, the trunk, and the branches of the tree.
We have some regulations already in place in terms of how far structures can get into the drip line. There's a limitation, so you can't get too close to the tree, but you can get up to the drip line. And then there are some conditions on if you get underneath the drip line, there are some minimum things that you have to do or a minimum distance you can. So there are some regulations already in place in terms of how far you can get, how close you can get to the tree. So again, it would be dependent on individual lots and where the location of the tree is and the structure. So the variance process allows us to look at individual lot on an individual basis and make the determination in terms of relationship between structure and tree and what's best for that particular lot. And then what other variances you're going to, the flexibility that's involved in making that happen.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, councilman. Campbell.
Thank you. On the oak tree protection, item number two during building and construction operations, can you tell me what's a suitable protective barrier is?
I think we would rely on a specialist to give us that information based on, again, where the location of the tree is, what the slope conditions are, if there's any slopes, or where the structure is going to be.
So there's a possibility that they could, somebody could build something under a tree?
Not currently. I mean, we have regulations that says you cannot build under the oak tree drip line.
And the drip line goes all the way out to the end of everything?
Where the leaves are, yeah.
Who is our arborist? Do we have one on, do we have one under contract that we can contact anytime? Is it the same guy all the time or the same lady all the time?
We do not have anybody kind of on call, so to speak, outside of the city. When we do have applications for trimming permits, it's usually Hank and I that go out, but we're just talking about trimming. We do have an arborist in our Parks Division, and we work with him as and when possible. But we don't have any Gary Oak specialist on call.
It seems to me that logical that if something came up that needed to be answered, that the city staff, if the contractor or the person doing the workaround thing said, I've got an arborist, then the city would probably say, what does your arborist say? And go with that.
Yes. That's what we rely on, is an arborist that either the applicant will hire or will be required to hire to give us the information. I mean, in some ways, I think it's good for the applicant to work with the arborist because then they can work out what's the best construction methodology that works for the site, and they can give us the suggestion. And then we can review it and say, okay, this works or not, as opposed to us having an arborist and telling them, this is exactly what you need to do. So there's pros and cons to that in terms of flexibility.
Why do we have things like this if we're not telling them exactly what they can do? All right. I thought that's the purpose of this.
Well, we have code to require barriers in code. And what type of barriers is hard to list because there could be several different kinds.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, councilor.
I know we had an inventory done years ago with the oak trees. So how many, I know we have this one, but how many other empty buildable lots do we have in Oak Harbor that this could potentially affect left with oak trees on them?
I don't think I have a count of that. We did inventory, I'm sure, of the oak trees that are on public property. I'm not entirely sure. Hank would be, or Kathy may know. We haven't done one for private property.
The more likely circumstance is where we have a larger-than-normal developed lot already, where perhaps they wish to shortclap that and create an additional building lot out of it, where there's already an oak tree on there. So I don't think we have, I can't think of any other totally vacant property that's a buildable lot that has an oak tree on it. There may be something out there, but I can't think of it. The more likely circumstance is either an expansion of an existing home or maybe a larger lot that gets split into two, and that's where this particular code would see its greatest application.
Councilman Servadia.
Thank you. I'm going to follow Mr. Campbell's logic here. If, I'm trying to get a handle on why we wouldn't prescribe something a little more, not necessarily the exact type of fencing, but couldn't we prescribe something more than just the word suitable? If we're looking at two pictures of potential construction sites that have nothing, is it because they're not actively constructing or why, I mean...
So one of those pictures is actually the site that we're talking about right now. So construction hasn't started. And yes, there was certainly construction debris that was piled up there when the subdivision was developed, and that's not okay. But we don't have, we haven't started the process because obviously we haven't been able to get to the building permit because of the code issue. I think we certainly could look at the code and see, are there things that we could be a little more prescriptive on? In fact, I think we said something generally to that effect to the planning commission because they had similar questions as what you did. What we were trying to do by keeping the two topics separate was, for the purposes of being able to process this particular project and get this building permit through the process, we wanted to rely on the Hearing Examiner and his authority to impose conditions of approval, which could prescribe something based upon an arborist's recommendation. That would take care of the instant case. We could certainly look at the code and say, are there things that we could more generally prescribe in the code so that we wouldn't have to rely on special conditions under a similar variance at some point in the future? That would just be a separate project. I think we were just thinking about it in terms of keeping it as two different code amendments.
And if there's something in the works, I don't want necessarily to hold this up if we could amend it later, but I very much would support something a little more prescriptive here. As far as language during construction, I had another thought. It'll come back to me.
And I'm sorry, I'll just say, I think the planning commission shared some of that same thought. They were interested, they understood the idea of moving forward with one piece, but I think they were interested in having the city think about pursuing a code amendment as has been suggested by the citizens.
Okay. So it would hopefully then give guidance to the developer or the builder, and then we're not running out there. I'd like it to be as simple but as clear as possible so that everyone knows what's expected. Is there anything, there's something in our code, I know if someone plants a tree, they have so many years, and this is a little sidebar, but if someone plants a Gary Oak, let me rephrase it another way. If I had an empty lot next to me that I did not want developed and I want to buy it, what stops me from going and getting four, five-foot saplings, Gary Oaks, and throwing them out there? And then that lot is preserved?
We rely on your good character not to do that, Mr. Servadia.
But is there not, I thought we had something that someone, if I wanted one in my yard, I want to plant it, but I have so many years to change my mind. We didn't have that in ordinance?
I think people have been, I've heard of a conversation about that here recently, but I'm not aware of that provision being in our code.
Okay. And then last but not least, do we have any kind of mitigation measures if we allowed someone to remove a Gary Oak for whatever reason, it's diseased, or we just determine this is a critical piece of property, and the development of that property might be more important than this one tree? Do we require people then to plant 10 trees of a certain size, 10 Gary Oaks if we're to remove one? Is there any mitigation for Gary Oaks?
There is, but I don't remember what it is off the top of my head. So we go through a whole sequence of things. Avoidance is your first step. And if you can't actually get to that and it's actually going to be removed through a process, because that's a hearing process, we have the ability to require mitigation. I think the code has some specifics in there, but you could also, on a case-by-case basis, do more than that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Welcome, Councilor Palmer.
Thank you.
We are on our action item, second action item.
I'll see that.
Okay. So we've heard from the public, and anybody else got any? Yes, councilor Campbell?
A suggestion was made is that we fix this issue later. And, you know, and go on from that point using whatever comes out of it. But for this particular tree, this particular lot, what I've heard, the suggestion is that we use what we've got and let the contractor go ahead with his construction with a suitable protection around that tree. I don't like that idea. If we're going to save trees, we're going to save trees. We can't make big speeches about loving Gary Oak and everything, and then the first, one of the times when we've got one where there's an issue, we're not willing to take a step back and fix the issue and go on from that point. I think we ought to fix this issue now rather than delay and delay.
The proposed amendment, Mr. Campbell, actually makes it easier to preserve the tree. That's the reason behind the amendment, is so that the building can be moved farther away from the tree.
I'm not worried about that part. I'm worried about the suitable, the language in this thing about suitable protection. That needs to be fixed rapidly before we go too much further. See, I think we've got two different issues going here. See, I think we're, we've got two different issues going here, and, and the suitable, the language is one.
Okay, other council? Yes.
I think, Mr. Campbell is very much concerned about the language of suitable protection for the Gary Oak tree, but according to you, the suitable protection would be based on the determination made by the arborist, and that could be included or incorporated in this language for that suitable barrier protection. Is there a language that you can put or addition to this ordinance? Or is it in the process made by, and the Development Services?
The, the application to, for the oak tree on Rose Hill is a separate application that's going to the hearing examiner, and is not part of the amendment that the City Council is considering. The variance language is general variance language for any lot, any, anywhere in the city, to protect the structure and the oak tree. So, what the City Council is looking at now is the general variance language regarding oak tree, not specifically for Rose Hill. Rose Hill application is on a separate track, and it's going to the hearing examiner, and the hearing examiner can put conditions on it, and he will, I think, based on the proposal that's being made. What the City Council is considering tonight is amending Section 1966 variance language in the zoning ordinance that applies to any lot that has a Gary Oak tree, and is not very specific to Rose Hill. I don't know if I answered that question.
And that allows that application to go forward. So, there, there are two separate things, but they're interconnected. One is the code, because if the code's not amended, the minimum, the closest they can get to the property line is five feet. That won't work in this particular building lot. If the code is amended, it will allow them to get closer to the property line with their building than five feet, if the hearing examiner approves that, which will allow the house to be farther away from the tree. Through that hearing examiner process, we can require the suitable protection, which is temporary, construction protection, right? It's, it's not something that's, that's permanent, it's just part of the, part of normal construction. We can require that through that, that hearing examiner decision. That's why staff is saying that we believe we can handle this particular instance, which is driving this code amendment in this fashion, and that we can then look to the code to say, "How can we strengthen the language of the code so that it's more clear at the very beginning to allay the citizens' concerns?" And then still rely, obviously, these, those things still go through the hearing examiner, so he could, he could even strengthen the things that are in the code if that was appropriate. So, two things, they are related, but you are not approving a particular application today. You're doing a legislative decision on the code. If you approve the code, it allows the variance request to go forward and to be heard by the hearing examiner. So, if, if you don't approve the code today, or want us to do more work on it, then we will just tell the applicant that, that it's not possible for him to go forward right now in the variance process, and that's something that we can certainly do.
Out of curiosity, how long would it take for you to further review the code?
Tough to say, Mayor. You know, it, it has all the hallmarks of a ninety to a hundred and twenty day kind of thing. You know, there's a, there's a certain part of this that's just built-in timeline that we can't do anything about, namely, the, the CEPA review process, and then the code review process when we have to send it off to the state. So, we've got some fixed time in there, but I, I think we envision that the code amendment itself is fairly simple. You know, we've, we've got a planning commission and a council who are primed for the topic, so we don't have a lot of time to bring you up to speed. It feels like that kind of timeline to me, yeah. And I might also add, obviously, we don't process these all the time because this is the first example that we can think of in, in our time here together. And so, while we think it's very important, I don't think that, that timeline should be of a concern to folks.
Yes, Council?
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize for being late. I had a scheduled entry in my calendar that was not at two o'clock, so my apologies. But I have a couple of questions. One, and I recognize this is not an application hearing, but with respect to moving in this particular case that you're talking about, and I don't know anything about the property, isn't it possible that you can go closer to the property line without a five-foot setback, depending on the type of construction, to go to zero lot line? In this case, does it allow you to do zero lot line construction? Recognize it has nothing to do with the code, but that's one of the possibilities that the applicant has in the scenario that you described.
It's a PRD, if I recall correctly, so, so it would allow modification of the setbacks, which would be a little, a little challenging, but I guess the short answer is yes, if that, if that somehow made the project work better, you could probably do that with the appropriate firewalls and all the things which are necessary.
So, the hearing examiner could theoretically say, "You can move it to zero lot line," but then you fall into construction requirements.
Right, but he can't do that unless this code is amended.
I got you, okay. Then the next thing I wanted to bring up in the proposal here, that's before. It has often been my experience that we've had to, on a development project, submitted a tree preservation plan, a tree protection plan, with a minimum. There are minimum requirements, like, for example, protecting the trunk of the tree, but not all sites have a condition where you can have a prescribed requirement, prescribed ordinance that applies to every situation. And I'll give you a couple of examples. One of the things that I think is most damaging to trees in general is installing utilities, because when you're trenching for utilities, you are really disrupting, if you're in the neighborhood of, of trees, you're really cutting through the root zone at various depths. Some areas may require, for example, where there are street crossings, which we require in our ordinance on CR20, to bore through it, you know, send the mole through it to put utilities, whatever the case may be. That may be part of a tree, tree protection plan. It may even require a tree protection plan that has a cluster of trees that have to be protected and not individual trees. It doesn't make sense when trees are only fifteen or twenty feet apart that you have these little fences, these little perimeters around them. The concept is to protect the Gary Oak tree. And I'm with both Mayor Protem and with Councilman Campbell, if we're going to have an ordinance with some teeth in it to protect these trees, it has to be substantive and not really just general left up to, I'm not going to say to a year department of planning, because in the future, there's other people there who may have a different opinion. But with a tree protection plan that meets minimum requirements, that gives you the flexibility to implement a program that protects the Gary Oaks. What is your comment to that?
We're happy to, to review code and bring it back to the Planning Commission and the council. You know, if that's the kind of, if that's the kind of specificity you would desire in the code, we can certainly do that for them. The only cautionary note is one that you've heard from us before, which is the more specific you are in the code, the more likely you'll run into a situation where you're presented a situation which those two things don't work very well together, and the thing which is trying to be done is somehow being supported as, as a, as a good project. And so, that's where, in particular, I think what's catchpoints are in critical areas. The fact that within the general construct of the code, we're allowed to ask for all sorts of additional information to help address how that thing is going to be affected by development. That, that generality can serve the citizens of Oak Harbor well because it lets us respond to them on a case-by-case basis. But you can go to a prescriptive method, and I've certainly seen codes like that, that just reference different kinds of tree protection standards. I mean, there are standards in the industry, and, and you can reference those.
Right, and those can be included in the plans, with you have a menu, a palette of how you can protect certain trees, whether they're in clusters or individual, or if other mitigation is required. But we don't have in our code, that I'm aware of, providing a tree protection plan in general. Do we? Yes or no?
We can, we can, we usually think about those when we ask for mitigation measures as part of granting a variance or some decision to the city. And I think the word "suitable" is mainly to cover that because then it gives the flexibility to ask for, whether it's a group of trees, whether it's a trench line, whether it's, you know, what are the unique circumstances that's on the property that requires a certain set of solutions custom for that particular lot? So, that's where I see the word "suitable" giving us the flexibility to ask for that specific protection, but there's also benefits to the prescription way of doing things because if there's prescriptive ways of doing things, then maybe that works, and they don't have to go to an arborist and get all the special things from them. So, both have pros and cons to them, but we go either way with them.
And your yes and no question, Mr. Alberg, is that our city code moved away from protecting quote-unquote "regular" trees some time ago in terms of significant trees, because that proved not to work for the community.
It happened what at ninety-five or something?
It focuses now on native vegetation areas, and there are standards that talk about protecting those native vegetation areas during construction.
I'd like to move that ordinance number 1803 containing the proposed amendment to OHMC Chapter 19.66 regarding variances for oak tree protection be adopted.
Okay, first motion, Justice has printed on the slide there. Any other discussion?
And I would like to make a friendly motion to that motion.
Amendment?
Amendment to that, friendly amendment to that motion, and that at a minimum, that we have a tree protection plan that's required for Gary Oaks that has a pallet. And this is one example, this is not the only example. That, number one, a developer, I'm kind of in the motion, I'll speak to the motion, that the ordinance provide a pallet for design for a tree protection plan.
So, I didn't.
Do I want to restate that? I should write it down.
It's not really admitting the code, though. I mean, it's, it's a concept, in fact, it'd be so bold, Mr. Alberg. You're talking about a concept again, which staff is in agreement on pursuing, I mean, I think we heard the message a lot clearer, but what you've just said, so it's very difficult to put into the code, as you phrased it.
We have a pointed order been filed, too.
So, at the AWC conference, Ann McFarland made a big deal out of several things. One of them is the friendly amendment, so it can be stated as an amendment to the motion. So, I move to amend, and we would all vote on that amendment, and then come back to the main motion, so it doesn't get confused. I'll stop at that point.
Then let, let me restate my motion.
This is an amendment?
Friendly amendment to the motion that's made, that the, the motion includes a requirement for an applicant to provide a tree protection plan for approval by the city.
Okay, so we do have an amendment to the motion, and we have a, and a second, that includes that the applicant.
Can I weigh in, Mayor?
Yes.
So, this is an amendment, a legislative amendment to the code as a whole, and I'm not sure where we would be placing this particular language. To me, it doesn't seem appropriate to place it in the part of the code that we're currently working in today, and I'm, I'm just not sure where it would go in the code, I'm not sure that we can, I'm not sure that I have a good idea of where we put that in the code based on the motion.
Sorry, I don't know if I'll state it or restate it, but I do want to comment on it. Would you restate the amendment?
Would you like for the rest of the vote to be read?
Please.
I have Councilmember Wassinger made a motion to adopt ordinance number 1803 containing the proposed amendment to OHMC Chapter 19.66 regarding variances for the oak tree protection be, that it, that shall be adopted. Motion was seconded by Councilmember Servadius. A friendly amendment was then made by Councilmember Alberg. His verbiage that he used for the first time said that we have tree protection plan that is required for Gary Oaks that has a pallet for design, for tree protection design. The second part of his friendly amendment restated that initial language to include a requirement for an applicant to provide a tree protection plan for approval by the ci, by the city. Motion was seconded by Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, and I'm glad Mr. Campbell seconded it, because I would have seconded, although at this point, I won't vote for it. I very much, I think we all very much support the concept, I'm just concerned about it possibly being rushed. I think we are giving some pretty clear indication to staff that this is something that's important to us, and we'd like to see more prescriptive, precise language, and maybe even those exact words eventually requiring, if it's required, we just don't state it, but a tree protection plan. So, I just don't want to necessarily muddle this, but I very much support the concept.
Anyone else? Want to speak? Councilor Alberg?
So, I hear you saying that we need to give staff an additional time to.
I think so.
Meet the terms or the subject of the conversation that we've had here, so that it's more meaningful.
Thorough.
Thorough.
Perhaps there's a better location for that particular case in code?
Yeah, I, I'm not really in concern about the location, that's something to you and Mr. Powers.
Okay, Councilor Wassinger?
Oh, I too, I concur, I, I support, you know, protecting the trees and having some language, even if, if it can still be general and allow, you know, you guys to work on it, but also having a plan. I like your word, having a, a plan, and, and to be able to provide, to help, help with these protected trees. But again, too, I certainly, as a City Council member, want to make sure that we, we follow the laws and make sure that we get it in the right chapter, code, planning, whatever, wherever that needs to go, and I'll, I'll leave that up to you guys, but I completely support, support also the idea in having staff make sure that we, we get that wording correct before we, before I would, would vote to just throw it, throw it somewhere that feel more comfortable.
Anyone else? Okay, so we're going to vote on the amended amendment.
Speak to that first. So, we just vote this down and then make a motion to have staff bring it forward for approval that is commensurate with our.
We could, if we vote, then we're going to vote on the motion. And then, then the council decides what they want to do from there. So, this, this vote will be on the amended.
Right.
Amendment to the motion. All in favor, say aye. In favor of the amendment? All opposed?
Aye.
Aye, we've got five opposed and zero four. So, now we're back to the motion. Are you ready to vote on that motion? It's, it's as appears on the screen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so we've got four ayes and one opposed, and so, we've completed that action item unless you want to take any more action. I don't, can we take any more action at this meeting?
I think, well, it's, it's not scheduled, certainly, it's advertised as a special meeting for this half, and so.
That could be a little.
Probably permissible to ask staff to come back, but I think staff is probably heard that there's interest in amending Chapter 20.16 as well as the amendment to 1966 that we just did.
And I could go on the record, but we'll put that on the agenda and get, bring that back to you. There's a couple of different things we've talked about that we need to talk about again, and we'll make sure we get that done.
Okay, okay, for now, that includes final action item, and we are moving on to Human Resources, the Wellness Committee presentation. So, we have.
Additional staff, people coming to the table here? Additional staff, people coming to the table here.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. My name is Emma Heath House. I am the Director of Human Resources, and I have with me here Kim Andrews, the HR Analyst. And another group of us that came in would be the Wellness Committee members. I have the honor and privilege of being here today to present to you on behalf of your employee Wellness Committee. We wanted to come and give you an update on your wellness program and to let you know that we are doing really well. So let's make sure I know how to use the clicker. There we go. So you might be asking, why is wellness important for the employees of the City of Oak Harbor? When employers place employee health among their core values, they create a workplace that enhances employee well-being. Employees enjoy greater health and job satisfaction. Our organization and community benefit more from productive, engaged employees. So all in all, everyone wins. As many of you are aware, the Association of Washington Cities is our partner. They have developed the Employee Benefit Trust, and the trust is our experts in providing quality, cost-effective health benefits. They help us promote different activities and events that support and guide us through our wellness program. So we highly depend on AWC. AWC also makes sure that there are great choices for us for our health plans. They give us different standards to make sure that we're meeting them to provide a healthy workplace, and then they make sure that they're providing service excellence. Currently, AWC serves over more than 270 employers. We're all part of a pooling program for claims and administrative costs, so it makes a lot of financial sense to be partnered with AWC. So the mission statement for our employee wellness program, the City of Oak Harbor Wellness Program inspires employees to strive for and achieve a healthy, happy life. The Wellness Program was established in 2002, and we very much value happiness and positivity. And I'd like to take a second to introduce the Wellness Committee members that are here with us today, and when I do so, I would also like to have Kim assist me in presenting them with a certificate from AWC for their participation and achievement in being part of the Wellness Program. So they have really taken a lot of time to participate and build the program up and make sure that they promote it to the employees. So I'd like you to wave or stand up, whatever you prefer. Dina Nichols from Finance, Angela Bronstein from Fire, Meg Massey from the Police, Kim Andrews from HR, Brad Von Hayden from Public Works, Kim Corrine from Legal, Lisa Felix from Development Services, Eric Cannon from Public Works, and Stephanie Lee Saunders from the Marina who is not here with us today. So thank you all very much for your contributions to the program and to the committee. So what does your wellness program do for our employees? We like to foster awareness, influence attitudes, and also identify alternatives. And by doing these things, we in turn see informed choices, change behaviors, and also the ability for people to reach optimal wellness, which is our ultimate goal, to help people achieve that. And how do we do that? The Wellness Program focuses on five holistic areas of well-being. They are physical, intellectual, social, spiritual, emotional, and occupational. What we've learned is when you focus on the physical area of well-being, it means being active. When you focus on the intellectual area of well-being, it means that you want to keep learning, you want to be engaged. Social, people want to be connecting with others, they want to network. Spiritual and emotional, they want to take notice, have some recognition. And occupational, they usually want to give back or they want to kind of do what might be known as leaving a legacy. And so there are some very important key wellness rules that we have to abide by, and to make sure that we have a very good program and committee, there were policies and procedures that were established in 2009. So the City of Oak Harbor does have Wellness Committee policies and procedures that we follow very closely whenever we're administering any of our activities. Now, why is employee health critical to us? Why is it important for us to share this information? Because as an employer, there are huge costs that come into play when you're talking about employee health. So the direct medical costs, those are easy to see, those are above the iceberg. So the medical, the pharmaceutical, the insurance. And then you have underneath the iceberg, the costs that you don't really see. That is 76% of our indirect costs from employee health issues, which are basically absenteeism, presenteeism, lost productivity, workers' comp, disability, replacement workers, overtime, and staff turnover, and training. So obviously, there's a lot of things that we want to focus on to make sure that those indirect costs are not going up, but hopefully going down because they're a little bit harder to control. So what we have learned is poor health behaviors, they lead to chronic disease. Those unhealthy behaviors, they create health risks, which then in turn create the chronic disease issues, and then that's where we get the really high employee-related expenses that we don't want to see for our health plan. Now, do wellness programs work? What we've learned is they can be very successful. You have to have a strategy. You have to have more than just activities. You need to make sure you have a team approach, which is why we have a really great committee. You need to have engaged leaders, which is why we're here today. We want to make sure that we're sharing with you what we're doing, and we want to make sure that we're always articulating the goals that we have. We are building our culture of wellness, and we are providing those motivating factors to make sure that people want to participate and stay engaged. Now, since 2011, we have been earning, we've been earning the Well City Award, which has given us a 2% discount on our medical insurance premiums. This is a great benefit for us. So 2% savings on our medical insurance premiums a year leads up to about $36,000. So that is a really good amount of savings if we participate and meet these Well City standards for AWC. Now, for the past 12 years in a row, the City of Oak Harbor has actually been recognized for earning the Well City Award. So for the past seven years, we've been earning the 2% discount, but for the past 12 years, we've actually been receiving that recognition. And we have this plaque, and we receive these little nice things to add to the plaque every year. So this is a really great accomplishment to see that for so many years in a row, we have really been successful in meeting the standards and being one of those cities that AWC wants to recognize as a well city. It's a great accomplishment. And in that seven-year time period, a savings of over $252,000, that definitely adds up over time, and it's a great savings for us to keep participating. So there are some big changes that have happened in 2017. AWC is definitely an innovator. They definitely want to relate to and get people motivated by the things that they use the most. So in 2017, there is a new platform for a health central, which is referred to as Jiff. It's an online electronic app-based partner, and it's going to be a point-based wellness rewards program. So there will be some things that continue, the health assessment, the coaching. But some of these new program changes, they are actually going to change the Well City standards that we have to meet in order to make sure that we're meeting those participation requirements to keep getting that 2% discount. So they're making some changes, but in turn, it's also going to make sure that our program and our committee make some changes as well. So let's just do a little brief overview on what's coming up this year, and it's kind of just been released as of July 1st, or June 1st, actually. And so this is kind of a half year, and then next year will be a new year, but this is the new way that we're earning the reward. It's a point-based system, and since the Jiff app is new, most of the points that you need to earn for this year are going to just be towards activating an account in the Jiff app. But then you can see you can earn different points for different items that they have available through their app. And in turn, you will get points that convert to an e-gift card. So in the past years, we've had the program where if you participate, you're able to earn a gift card, a Visa Rewards debit card that's mailed to you. Now it's going to be an electronic gift card through the Jiff app. You can get it for Amazon, Starbucks, Home Depot, but then you also have the ability to purchase discounted wellness products directly through the Jiff app. So if you want to get a Fitbit, a fitness tracker, or some sort of scale, you can take your points that you're earning and put it right towards those products through Jiff. The other big and exciting thing is they have sweepstakes. So if you don't want to use your points towards getting e-gift cards, you can enter into sweepstakes. And for the next 64 days, it takes 50 points to enter into the sweepstakes for either Seahawks tickets, or right now they have a kayak or a $500 Amazon gift card. They've talked about weekend getaways, which will possibly be in the future sweepstakes. So there's different options depending on how people want to use their points that they earn. So why are we here and what do we need from you? Well, we really just want to make sure that leadership supports wellness. We want that continued support. We want the continued participation, and we want the continued funding to make sure that we can provide activities and events that are motivating to our employees. There's a lot to come right now during 2017. We have Wellness Committee meetings and webinars every month. We have Lunch and Learn webinars every month. There's a wellness newsletter that comes out. Our summer picnic is coming up, and we'd really like to invite you all to be there. It's on August 24th, which is a Thursday, from 11:00 to 1:00 in the Marina Park. And it's a great opportunity for us to network and connect, and we usually try to have some sort of physical activities going on because it's a wellness event, and it's a lot of fun to get outside. We hope the weather will stick around. We also have our onsite biometric health screening scheduled for our employees. We do this every other year. We are planning a haunted Halloween potluck. Our November Fall Challenge through AWC is Fit for the Feast, which will all be through the electronic app. And then we're also planning our holiday party in December. So there's many opportunities for our employees to network and connect with each other, but also opportunities to follow up on their health screenings and wellness activities. So to give you a brief overview of our Wellness Committee budget, this is our current budget, and we do receive a mini grant that we try to make sure we get every year by having health assessment participation. And what we have learned is it equates to about $16 per employee for the year, which is not very much money per employee for the amount of stuff that we're doing. So the Wellness Committee spends a lot of time and a lot of activities. We do have a smaller, medium-sized employee group, but we want to make sure that we're giving each employee the best benefit that we can for the wellness program. So it's important for us to know each dollar and how we can apply it. And what this equates to when we're looking at a savings is possibly a savings of up to $221 per employee annually. So the Wellness Committee is very mindful of the budget, and we're also tracking to make sure that we're being mindful of the savings versus the expenditures. And then again, here's just a recap of our expenditures by year for the past several years. In 2015, obviously, there was a centennial holiday celebration, and there was a lot more activities that we were able to do, so there was a little bit of an increase. The wellness budget also includes an additional $3,800 to help offset what we have as set up the gym membership fees. So there's an incentive for employees. If they're enrolled, they can earn $20 per month when they work out at least 10 times a month. So 10 times a month, that's kind of a lot. It can be three times a week, maybe. So you can kind of see the average cost that we're giving to employees right now for that incentive during 2016, it was about 318 per month, and that equals, you know, let's see, well, that's on the next slide, sorry. No, it's not on this slide. I thought I had it. But anyway, there were three employees who actually went every single month in the year of 2016. So we would like to give a shout out to Tally Boyer, Brian Boss, and Andrew Moon because they earned the gym incentive every month during 2016, and as you can see, there were 16 total people averaging out every month during that year, and those are the different numbers throughout the different years of the average employees. So the Wellness Committee has a retreat every January. It's usually about a half day. The Wellness Committee takes some information from AWC and plans out activities and events for the entire year. It takes some time, but we want to make sure that we're connecting with all of our five areas of holistic well-being. During 2016, you probably noticed that we had various health campaigns, Unplugged, Healthy Habits, and Walktober. And there was also different awareness events that you might have noticed, National Wear Red Day, sunscreen awareness, and financial fitness. And then we had the Spring Forward Breakfast, where we passed out oatmeal, and that was very popular for everyone. And then our annual summer employee picnic last year, here's a couple of pictures, and again, we invite you to be there this year on August 24th at the Marina from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Chief Merrill loves to barbecue for us, and also our department heads love to volunteer and help us out, and it's always a really fun time. And then we also have potluck luncheons throughout the year for, you know, colorful potluck dishes or Autumn Fest Potluck to make sure people are eating healthy options. You may have noticed our wellness newsletters, they are created in-house by our Wellness Committee. They do a great job, very colorful, very informative. And we also have a wellness program guide that has our reward point program for our employees. And AWC has even kind of recognized us for going the extra mile, to actually putting together something for our employees. Not other cities all have done that yet, and so they're kind of using our program guide as well to take to other cities to say, this is what we recommend if you really want to communicate even further, all the options that you have. And they do have an extra bonus. If they earn a total of 100 points with us by filling out this rewards program, they do earn some wellness time off. And here's just kind of a recap of our event participation. So 20% of eligible employees completed the health campaigns, 58% completed the health assessment. We only needed 50%, so that was a great accomplishment for us. And social events, we're always tracking who's attending and how many percentage of those people are benefited or not benefited. And so what are our goals? We want to make sure that we are encouraging top-down support for our improved wellness culture. We want to make sure we're sharing and educating as much as we can. We want to increase participation for our employees. That's always a huge goal for us. And we need to make sure they're always concentrating on the top three health issues that were identified the previous year. So during 2016, those three top health issues that were identified were stress, weight, and nutrition. We want to make sure that we are able to earn the 2% reduction. That's super important to us, and that means meeting the Well City standards that are put into place by AWC. It's a lot of tracking for us, but it's super important, and it's a huge benefit as we've learned for savings. And we also want to make sure that we're able to continue to earn the AWC mini grant because that obviously helps our committee and our program. So be healthy and be happy is our last little message. We've given you some handouts today. One of them is our wellness program summary, which has some really helpful information, just kind of a summary of the health screening in the middle, a summary of some of our numbers over on the left-hand side, and our goals over on the right-hand side. And do you have any questions, or is there any information that you would like us to bring back to you in the future?
Counselor? Yes, Counselor?
No questions, just want to say thank you to you and the committee. Besides the obvious, you know, tangible 2% savings on the health premiums, the intangibles from the newsletters we get, we probably don't recognize you guys enough, but very much appreciate all the intangible stuff that's going on behind the scenes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and congratulate the Wellness Committee and all the members of the Mayor's Committee, not only for promoting the well-being, promoting the pocket calls, or getting them to present this kind of thing, but most important, during the annual meeting of AWC, AWC sent the award to City of Oak Harbor representatives, Senator Mayor and the council members that live up in the states and received the Well City Award.
Yay!
We're very proud of it.
Yes, very proud accomplishment. It's a great success.
Yes, Counselor Almburg?
Thank you, Mayor. To improve participation or to increase the intensity of participation, do you have interdepartment contests?
You know, we've talked a little bit about it. We haven't really done big ones yet, but I think that's coming soon. The Walktober one was a little bit competitive. We just had a recent campaign for colorful choices, which was a little bit competitive, but not so much interdepartmental. That would definitely be a place for us to focus.
Well, Doug Merriman told me one time that he would be willing to run PT at 6:00 in the morning in the parking lot down there.
Oh, okay. Good to know.
Anyone else after that? I too would like to thank those on the committee. It's nice to see members from pretty much every department, and thank you for everything. It is, it does make us feel proud. We were just, some of the councilors were there last week in Vancouver at the convention, and it's, out of the 281 cities, there are probably about half, I think it's less than half, that are well cities, so thank you.
Thank you.
Top-down, I guess that means us.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to... Okay, we're going to move on to Public Works Engineering, 2017 Water Transmission Main Project. Let's thank our city engineer, Joe Stolz, going to join us. Welcome, Joe.
Mayor, council members. Hope you're having a nice afternoon. You got, you get to listen to me for a little while now. I've got a few items on the agenda. First off is the 2017 Water Transmission Main Projects. It's kind of a elusive name, but what we've done is we've combined three budgeted projects into one to, one because they're related to each other and two just for ease of management of things. The three projects are surge analysis of the 24-inch transmission main and that's the main that goes all the way from Sharp's Corner all the way into the Altfield Booster Pump Station. At the same time, we'll be doing a condition assessment of that 24-inch main, looking for any areas that might be susceptible to corrosion and identifying those. That actually works nice hand-in-hand with the surge analysis because if there is a wall thickness in the pipe that's degrading a little bit, we consider that when we do our surge analysis so we don't overstress the pipe. And then the last piece of the puzzle, which kind of stands out alone, is we're looking to create a new intertie. There's several interties along the 24-inch line between that and our 10-inch main that parallels it. But we don't have one up really close on the south side of Deception Pass Bridge. So you'll notice, you might have noticed when we were doing some work on the bridge this last couple of months, that there were some portable toilets out at Deception Pass. It's because we had to shut down the 10-inch main all the way down to the intersection entrance to Deception Pass State Park. So what we're looking to do is create an intertie up closer to the bridge. So if we have to do work in the future, we won't, we'll maintain that connection. So we, you know, with that, we go through the normal process of consultant selection for engineering. We sent out an RFP to, I think, I don't know if it was 100, but it was everybody that was on the MRSC consultant roster. We emailed them all. We had three responses. And it's, interestingly enough, it's people that we've worked with before. It was BHC is one. They've helped us in the past with the part of the facilities plan for the treatment plant and currently they're working on the lift station lids down there at the bottom of Passak at Pioneer. Gray and Osborne is another one that submitted. They're, they've done a lot of design work for us. They did our water system plan. They did the design for the 2017 Water System Improvement Project, which is the new water lines going in O'Leary. And then the other players, Corolla Engineers submitted. They have, they started actually out in the Water Transmission Main Arena and moved into treatment plant projects. So we had an interview panel where we reviewed the RFPs. They were all very well-qualified. We know that we've all worked with them in the past. And so we invited their project teams to come up and do an interview with us and it was myself and Arnie, Rich Tyhouse, who, Tim Shelley showed up when, he got busy one day and wasn't able to be there. And then Doug was also on that, on that team. And through that, we determined that Corolla Engineers had the most qualified team and the best approach to the project. So I didn't want that to be too much of a shock because, you know, but when you look at the other two engineering firms that are working with us, I mean, we couldn't ask for three better candidates to propose on this. So we're currently in the process of negotiating scope of services with them and we'll be coming back, I suspect, in September with a contract to move forward with them. And with that, I'll take any questions about that you might have.
The 24, the 24-inch comes from Sharp's Corner and you said the 10-inch starts at Pass Lake. Does it start from a different source?
No, no, we, there was originally, the 10-inch came all the way from Sharp's Corner as well and then over time, Anacor's took that over for their uses and upsized it. So the end of their responsibility is just to the north of Deception Pass Bridge. And then we take it over from there into town.
Any questions?
You're making it too easy on me.
So far.
So that's all I have on that one. You ready to move on to the next one? So the next one on the list is our changes to standard details. This one relates to strictly to pavement thickness. We've all talked about the condition of our roads in town and how do we maintain those better? What can we do to help ourselves out? One way is to increase the pavement thickness. It's currently, the minimum thickness is two inches and I've increased it to three. And that, I have the ability to do that through the Chapter 11 of our code, through the street design standards to modify details. Couple reasons why I've chosen to do that. One, street rehab projects. We're kind of between a rock and a hard place with a lot of these. The most common way to do a street rehab project in a neighborhood that has curb and gutter is to grind it down and overlay it. And if you go anything more than an inch, you have to improve all the ADA accessibility on the street. So what ends up happening when you only have two inches of asphalt, it varies in thickness from one side of the street to the other and the whole thing comes up. So if you have three, we have a better chance of maintaining that one inch and being able to do an affordable overlay program years into the future. Also, a thicker pavement section increases the life of that pavement as well. So 50% more in thickness gives us a lot more life and helps us out in the long run. And that's the short story of that one. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to take them.
Questions? Yes, Councilor.
Is three enough? I mean, obviously, there is going to be a cost to a developer, but I wholly support going with more because the city forever inherits that infrastructure to maintain.
You know, I think it's, given the climate that we're in right now, I think it's a reasonable request of developers to ask for three inches. If we ask for more, it might be too much of a strain. This, I felt like this was a good compromise.
Someone asked me before, how thick is the asphalt on the road on state highway? Does it stay longer? And I said, I don't know, but in the city, they don't stay there. It rains and you can see these upfalls. So is this within the state department?
This is just going to be mainly for neighborhood streets. When you get, when you get out onto collectors and arterials, you start looking at thicker pavement sections. An example, when we were, I think you've all probably driven down Midway and seen the patch in the street in front of the old Sears store. That's, that's, there was a water line break there that we're still trying to get the final patch on, but pavement thickness there is 10 inches. I mean, it's kind of, it's hard just, you know, from one spot to another, it can be pretty extreme.
There is a bigger update and program to increase the asphalt, so increase the life of the streets also.
Yeah, Councilor Ombra. Thank you. I support this. I'm surprised we didn't do it long time ago.
Thank you.
Three inches or two inches is lightweight for a street.
Yeah, I'm not really sure how, I think it was three inches before and then went to two and I really don't know, but I think three's bare minimum.
Many other jurisdictions all require three and four.
Yes.
On tight streets.
I considered doing some sort of a performance standard to pavement thickness and, you know, then everybody's got to go through the, give them geotech to prove that it's the right thickness and that doesn't seem worth it. So I figured three was enough to keep us on track.
Okay. Anyone else?
Moving right along?
Next slide. Yeah, you don't have to take the full lap.
My goodness, this is awesome. Okay. So we, we had a nice windstorm come up back May 23rd. And out at the Marina, we already had some repairs proposed for out at the F-Doc and it just so happened, one of the, one of the panels, the guardrails, I guess you'd call them, or pedestrian rails or, anyway, fell off. So it got our attention pretty quick. So we already had Moffett Nickel under contract and plans developed and permits underway to repair some other damage from a storm a while back. So we issued an emergency amendment with them to go out and investigate. They went out and dove the site and took a closer look and when it came to it, they says, well, you know what, it can wait until the rest of the repairs are done, which are going to be September, October timeframe. So it might, you might see some areas fenced off out there with some caution tape during all the vents this summer. Just know that's what that's about and we'll be out there working on it in the fall. And since it does, the reason this kind of came around in a strange way is because it was an emergency, that gives the mayor authority to sign off on the contract without having to come back to council first. We just need to report back to you and let you know what we did and what's going on. And I got a couple more that aren't on the agenda to talk about as well.
Is that a joke?
Not a joke. They get better and better.
The jokes are the items.
They could be jokes. You don't want me telling jokes, I'm an engineer. You can ask my wife. So next one I have is about the windmill down in the park.
Can we talk about items that aren't on the agenda for a special meeting?
The special meeting part is over. We've moved on to the non-action items in the workshop portion. Next time it could be more clearly delineated, but the line in between is meant to signify that we've moved from the special meeting into the workshop portion.
All right, great. So during the same windstorm, I believe, that the damage occurred out at the F-Doc, we also had a piece of timber fall off of the windmill. So we went out and took a closer look and we're going to have to do a little bit of repair work on the windmill. So it, you know, it's amazing how timing works out. It never ceases to amaze me that we come to this point right at the Fourth of July weekend. But you're going to see some fencing go up around the windmill and that's for public safety because there are a few of the gingerbread-y pieces up on the windmill that are not as securely attached as they could be and we would hate for anybody to get hurt. So as soon as we can get the fence out there, it's going to be up and we'll put some notices on the fence, letting people know what we're up to. But just so you know, kind of ahead of time, that's what it's about. Any questions about that?
Yes. What's the plan to fix it?
That's a great question. We have a structural engineer that's coming out tomorrow to get up in the bucket truck and take a closer look. Right now, we're looking for a way to make it safe so we can remove the fencing.
So if he's up in the bucket truck, why don't you give him some tools?
I, I know. You know, if he was capable of doing that, I would ask him to do that. I don't know yet.
And he's an engineer?
Oh, it's smarty pants. Now you're playing a joke on me. Yeah. You know, if it's something that our crews can work on, that's, that's something we'll look into. First and foremost is ensuring that it's safe. Then it's moving to what do we want to do from there? I don't know the answer yet.
Anyone else? Questions? Okay.
So I have one more, fun one. This one is Windjammer Park Playground Equipment. We've all, we've all been down and seen the equipment that's south of the new treatment plant and we have removed portions of it that posed a hazard, but it is in desperate need of something. Knowing that we have Windjammer Park Phase One coming along that's going to impact that area and the fact that that playground equipment is dated, can't find parts for, and we've done everything we can to keep it going. It's very likely that in the near future, you'll see pieces of it start disappearing. And that's the ones that are the most noticeably, well, one, not fun for the kids because there's rust all over them or they're becoming somewhat of a hazard. And the goal, there's not much, we've tried everything we can to maintain them the best we can and I think we're at the point where it's just the best thing to do is pull them and move forward with the park plan.
Any questions?
All right.
That's it. Thank you.
Do you want me to come up with some?
Nice report.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving to development services. Our development services. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. So this first item coming out of my department is related to the special events permits and then potentially also a little discussion about sale of alcohol in the parks. So as you know, on your consent agenda, you just adopted some changes to Chapter 5.5.0 of the municipal code, which addressed parades, athletic events, and other special events. And while those changes in that code were pretty small, removed the reference to the police department as being the primary department that processed those and some housekeeping language changes, the changes behind the change in the code are rather significant. And before I go any further, I want to acknowledge the efforts of Nicole Tesh and Lisa Felix. Nicole, of course, from Doug's office, Lisa from mine, who have been tasked with sort of looking at our special events permit process and figure out how we can make it better for the community and frankly, better for staff as well. And one of the other things that you did in the code is you said that the city administrator or his or her designee will be handling the processing of those permits. I'm pleased to tell you that I happen to be that designee in terms of the processing part. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Actually, Lisa is the designee. So a title I held very shortly. So you can see here in the agenda, Bill, what we're really doing is just filling you in on a new process, right? The goal is to make it more efficient and more understandable for the applicants. So Lisa and Nicole are developing new forms, new applications. They'll be web-based when our website can handle that. They'll be, be able to be done in parts, right? So you fill out the top part, move on to the next box. If it doesn't pertain to you, then you don't have to worry about that and it really will lead you through the process much simpler. But then it'll also make it much easier for staff to review and process those permits. As you probably know, quite a lot of effort goes into special events. We do a lot of work to coordinate amongst the departments, make sure that all the street closures happen in the correct way, all the safety features are in place. All of that takes a lot of conversation between the different staff members. It's not been particularly efficient. Nicole and Lisa have devised a way to use our, using our existing software that we already have to make that process a little more seamless, involving those people who need to be involved, but not bogging down everybody's email who doesn't need to be involved. Long and the short of it is, is that we're this close to rolling out a new process. The official switch-over date is July 1st. We'll be processing them downstairs. We've created, or Lisa has created a special email address, special event permits, O'Carver, so that our citizens can communicate directly with that email account, which she will be manning. Phone number is her phone number. So really, a point person and a streamlined process. Sort of switching gears then, as we were thinking about this process and as we were getting comments from the users of the process, the subject of the sale of alcohol in the parks has come up again. And so as the council knows, it's allowed, subject to the council approval, in Catalina, Windjammer, and Flintstone Parks as part of a special event permit upon approval by the council. It's also allowed in other parks on a case-by-case basis and there are some conditions that...
It's also allowed in other parks on a case-by-case basis, and there are some conditions that you put into the code that allow that to take place. We've had a little bit of feedback that, that users might find that to be a little cumbersome because it requires that to be queued up into a timeline that would let it get to you on your agenda for your consideration. And so we're throwing out there just as an idea for you to maybe give some to consideration is whether you'd be interested in seeing that approval process being handled administratively by staff through the special event permit process. If that's something that you're interested in, just sort of give us that head nod. We can draft some code, come back to you with it. If it's something that you're not interested in, then you don't need to do anything. So we'll just leave it at that.
Head nod. You're interested in doing it? Delegate is administrative. Counselor, question?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that makes sense, but at the same time, my only sort of thought on that would be city council members. This kind of caught me off guard. Maybe my concern, I mean, maybe it would have to be something worded with some of these, you know, restrictions included, like, you know, for the safety of citizens and the children, if there's children around, or, you know, maybe something that I would maybe feel more comfortable knowing that I wasn't going to have one of my constituents who I'm trying to represent be like, what do you, what did you do?
Sure.
Because, you know, ultimately, you know, I would feel, I would want to feel, feel good about, you know, the wording and feel like that we were doing what the citizens, what we are trying to represent the citizens and what they wanted with those conditions of having alcohol in the parks would be, you know, just a priority for me, for sure.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. I mean, I think that if the, you know, if the code got switched so that it was administrative, you would think to look to preserve the same features that are already there.
Yeah, that we heard citizen comment and input and what the citizens definitely voiced their concerns and what they wished to see and what we approved, you know, before.
And we're really sensitive to that because we, you know, we of course observed those conversations when it took place. And so that's why we're taking just the baby step of asking the question today. And if it is something that seems like you're interested in, then we can work on the code.
Yeah, thank you. Great.
Anyone else? Yes, Counsel.
Thank you. Help me understand, or tell me if I've got this correct. So I'm looking in our packet, page 130, the very bottom, number one. Right now in Catalina, Windjammer, and Flintstone, the sale of alcohol in the parks comes forward with a special events permit. We still, we approve that.
Correct.
So that's part one. Part two of this is then if we had a special request, like we processed at Fort Nugent for the cyclocross races, that also requires council approval. Are you thinking we could streamline this process for both of those so that no council approval is needed?
We're thinking that we're interested in whatever you would be interested in. And I didn't mean that in a facetious way. I think it could go either, I mean, the Catalina, Windjammer, and Flintstone Parks have maybe become accepted by the community as that those are places where those kinds of events are comfortable being held, right? I mean, Catalina was the first, then it was Windjammer, then Flintstone was added. And that kind of makes sense when you think about where some of our major events are taking place. If I recall correctly, the greatest citizen comment took place when we talked about other parks, right? And so, you know, I think you would have your choice here. If you're thinking that you would be comfortable in those three named parks, that's great. If you'd like to try it on for size in, in all of them, then we could draft a code in that fashion as well.
So my thought would be, I would be comfortable with staff making that decision as long as we have enough timeframe, we can get a quick response to the applicant. If they weren't happy with the decision or wanted to come before council, then we give them an appeal process to come to council and say, no, this is why it's important to this particular event, and then we would have to make that decision.
Okay. It's a good comment.
Anyone else?
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. LeFever?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Doug, if you could take one of them, I'd appreciate it. This is the third meeting for the critical areas ordinance update. And instead of going into a lot of background, a lot of history, which I've already done in previous sessions, I'm just going to address basically what's changed since our last work session in, in May to this session today. In your packet, you have, again, the ordinance which we are proposing. It is called the second draft for a reason. Through the course of the last month after review, we found some typos and some grammatical errors that we are correcting as part of the second draft. But we also received comments back from our Department of Fish and Wildlife and Ecology on the sections that were certainly most pertinent to them, and that's the wetlands and the fish and wildlife habitat conservation area sections. They did have some comments. Fish and Wildlife essentially added some references to some guidebooks that they had already prepared that we didn't have referenced in our code since our last update in 2005. And the Department of Ecology had some issues with some of the buffers that we were proposing around our wetlands. They wanted to increase them. So in conformance with their recommendations, we did amend that ordinance to reflect their comments and also changed those errors that we had. The second attachment in your packet today is kind of a bridge document that shows some of the changes, or all of the changes from the first ordinance to the second ordinance, which is part of your packet today. It's just kind of a tool to help you know what changed from that first ordinance. Also a reference in that second attachment was the comments that we received back and incorporated into the second ordinance from the Department of Fish and Wildlife and Ecology. And the third piece of your packet today was just a checklist that we actually filled out. It was a Department of Commerce checklist that says, you know, if you check all these boxes in affirmative, you're in compliance and in conformance with what we're going to be looking for, for your critical areas ordinance update. It's an optional process. We did do it and we were able to check all the boxes and say, yes, we're in conformance with what's being looked at, at the state level. What was passed around is titled Exhibit A. We had some last minute discussions with our engineering department and due to the sensitivity of stormwater and low-impact development issues that we discussed thoroughly last year, and steep slopes and unstable slopes, we decided to change what was being proposed in the ordinance to kind of give us a little bit more flexibility and administration of those situations where the stormwater may create an issue at a steep slope. So this, this input is from the engineering department and we are recommending that we include that in the ordinance. It was not in your second draft ordinance that's part of the packet. That's why it's a separate document. To bring us up to date as far as action is concerned, Planning Commission had their public hearing last night. They unanimously forwarded a recommendation of approval to the city council and you will be holding a public hearing next Wednesday on this very subject. So with that, I will conclude my comments and certainly answer any questions you may have or any discussion you might have.
Okay. Questions? Yes, there were two days.
Mr. LeFever, you said, in conformance with their recommendations, we made these changes. So being sensitive to the environment, I'm, I don't want to, I'm curious, could we be in a position where we're being more restrictive than we need to be if it's a recommendation and not a mandate? And I'm looking, just not having gone through this in depth, but looking at page 137. Sections, right at the top, they're all the red. Section 17, it talks about critical habitat. About halfway down, it said, these areas do not include such artificial features or constraints as irrigation delivery systems, irrigation infrastructure, irrigation canals, and drainage ditches, et cetera. What I don't want to do is have introduced in here language if it's, it's more restrictive than what may need be that would later hamper us. I know we've talked about a ditch that runs back just to the north of Windjammer Park that is a wetland, but it's also a ditch. And so are we creating anything here that could, down the road, be difficult to reverse and was more restrictive than maybe needs to be at this point?
Let me just start by saying the new strategy that is being employed and the typing system that Ecology has come up with, the rating system for the wetlands, they're really tying in the habitat and the value and function of a wetland. And they, they're basing a lot of that on recent studies that have been completed that dictate basically a wider buffer maintains that function and value of the wetland. That doesn't say anything about the category of wetland. You know, if it's a low-value wetland, doesn't provide a lot of wildlife habitat, your buffers are going to shrink. That's the basis that Ecology came back and said that we need to increase that buffer area because it wouldn't maintain that value and function of the wetland. The other thing that we're looking at as far as our buffers are concerned is the intensity of the land use in the adjacent portion of the wetland. Obviously, if it's more intense, your buffers are going to increase. And that's another thing that the Department of Ecology mandated us to look at and incorporate into this draft.
Okay, so when you say their recommendations, their recommendation was more a response to comply with the mandate?
It is.
Okay. It's not just a recommendation?
It's not just a recommendation. It's, it's, they're basing their best available science on their documentation and telling us that's what we need to abide by.
Thank you.
Other questions? Input? Okay, seeing none. I appreciate the delivery. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to temporary sign code revision. Get the open part.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Today, I'm going to do a quick briefing on the progress of our temporary sign ordinance revision. As you probably know, there was a recent Supreme Court decision that has made it difficult for cities to operate their temporary sign codes in the kind of traditional manner by categorizing and regulating by what that sign says. We're not allowed to regulate based on content anymore, so we're looking at new ways of accomplishing the same goal. So based on our previous, I guess I haven't, I haven't spoken to you folks yet, but based on what the staff has gone through and with the Planning Commission a little bit also, there's been a fairly long process here and we didn't want to bring it to you kind of too quickly, so this is where we're at right now. We've got a draft that's in your packet there that we can take a look at. So what we've done is gone through and stripped away all references to content in there and created what I'm terming as a form-based sign code. And so we have a sign type matrix. And rather than, like I said, rather than going through and describing a sign by what it says, we're describing a sign by what it looks like, what it's made of, how large it is, and things like that. So that, based on that description, is how we're regulating it, where it can go, how long it can stay up, and those sorts of things. We're basing it all on a time, place, and manner criteria, and therefore, we feel like that meets what the Supreme Court has said with regards to how we can regulate those signs. An important thing to consider here is that we are not going through and changing significantly what people can do with signage. What we're doing is we're changing the way that we are relaying that information and how we're regulating it. We don't want to take away signs necessarily. We don't want to have loopholes where there's all kinds of new signs proliferating because of something we've left out. And so that's why I feel it's important that we all kind of take a look at this and think through, you know, if you were a person who was trying to find a loophole in it, what could you do or how would you go about trying to get through that? Because what we have here is a fairly new concept that hasn't necessarily been tested by other communities. So we're kind of out on the forefront on this one and we'd like to think it through so we don't have an issue where we have a whole bunch of signs popping up where there weren't before. So in my agenda bill there, we have a little table that shows the existing temporary sign code and the proposed temporary sign code. I want to point that out specifically because I think it's important. There are a couple of things, or there are a few things here. First of all, the existing temporary sign code refers to the different sign types by the content based on their sign. Can't do that. So the new one says, refers to the sign types by their appearance, the size and materials, and the manner of installation. Number two there includes a very similar list of guidelines and principles that are in two different locations in the existing sign code. We wanted to cut down on that kind of duplication because we feel that causes confusion for people who are reading it, for the staff that's administering it. And it can also cause a situation where if we revise part of the sign code, we might forget something and you have conflicting information. So in our proposed temporary sign code, on the right-hand side there, we combined a lot of these items into one place so that there's a consistent list at the very beginning before you get into that sign type matrix that applies to all the signs. And also in the existing temporary sign code places sign types over several different sections. We think that that probably causes a little bit of confusion, so we put everything again into that sign type matrix in one place. And finally, the organization of the text in the existing sign code includes standards for specific sign types in multiple different locations or presented in a nonlinear manner. The way that I've organized the new sign code, I feel is more of a linear sort of way of going about presenting that information. Hopefully, it'll make it easier again for, not only for, for citizens who are putting up a yard sale sign or business owners who are putting up a sale sign out front, but it makes it easier for city staff to make, give a consistent answer to somebody who calls in to ask the questions about the sign code. So what we're asking for today essentially is to have you all take a look at this information, take a look at the draft sign code, and let us know if there's anything that you see glaring that we're missing, that you feel doesn't reflect community values, or you think that needs to be changed in some way. We are continuing with outreach to the public and stakeholders. We had a open house and we had some comments come in based on that. So we're going to continue that. The next meeting that, or next time you'll see this will probably be in mid-August for a final adoption with a final draft on that. So we've got about a month and a half that we can all take a look at it. Feedback to me is important and certainly welcome, so.
Okay. Counsel, questions? Input? Yes, Counsel.
Thank you, Mayor. When we originally addressed Reed versus Gilbert, I thought it was more with permanent signage. And one of the, or I remember coming up because of the 2% sign that we funded and put down at Bixma Gateway Park.
Yes.
Have we reconciled, and I realize this is temporary signage, can we talk about that? Have we reconciled that at all as far as limiting, if we can't limit content, what do we?
This specifically, what we're discussing today, Reed versus Gilbert, was regarding temporary signs. And so that is specifically what we're focusing on today. What happened with the Bixma Park sign, I'm not entirely certain about, honestly, because I've been focusing on this here, so.
So still, we're looking at, you said time, place, manner, but not content? If you had somewhere had something hateful to say?
Well, there, there are still ways that you can restrict that sort of thing. Just like you can't yell fire in a crowded movie theater, there are still certain things that we can, we can say that you can't have obscene messages and things that are going to cause panic and stuff like that. That is one of, and I talked about the linear manner in which that this is laid out. There are general standards in here under the very first section that talks about the ability to, for us to restrict obscene language, symbols, or images, being in a state of disrepair or causing disruption or danger to pedestrians and automobiles. So there are still ways that we can restrict that. You know, getting into the whole free speech thing, it's a little bit more of a gray area, for sure.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we're moving to our last item of business, I believe. County-wide planning policy update.
Thanks again, Mayor. This is the, as you can see, the second time that this subject has been on one of your workshop agendas. I think the last time I gave you the briefing, we, we let you know
This is the, as you can see, the second time that this subject has been on one of your workshop agendas. Last time I gave you the briefing, we let you know that we were working with our colleagues at the county on potential amendments to the county-wide planning policies. So really, the goal of today's briefing is to just remind you of a couple of key points and see if you've had any thoughts since that time that you'd want to share with us as we continue on our process here. So, just as a refresher, county-wide planning policies, as we know them today, were approved, I think, in February of 2016. We knew at that time, and I believe we told you, that something as complex and comprehensive as this, there would need to be some fine-tuning once we've had a chance to apply them into real-life situations. We're at that time, right? We're at the point where we should really be thinking about some minor tweaks. One of the key things that was done with the adoption in 2016 was to establish a clear process for buildable lands analysis, and I'll apologize in advance for acronyms. There's quite a few of them today in this topic, and as you read your packet. This is actually one where it's really hard to avoid them. But we did establish a process for the buildable lands analysis, and that was really critical to the county and to the city as well. We were interested in knowing in advance, before we would start something, start a process, how are we going to go about calculating the land available to handle our population projections? For those of you who were around in 2005, we didn't really have that process, and that led to some confusion and some controversy. So this was a huge step for both jurisdictions. It helped remove that, that part of the potential for controversy. So I think it was last fall, we started at the staff level, having some conversations about this. It sort of ramped up after the first of the year. County's been working hard on it. They sent us some drafts, as you can see, in April. We got them some comments back in May. We had your last, or your first briefing was, was at your last month's workshop. This is a graphic that I'd put together for you before, but I think it was worth going over again. And just to kind of remind you, sort of procedurally and in the scheme of things, where do county-wide planning policies fit? So Growth Management Act is the overarching thing that we work under, right, when we talk about urban planning, or county planning for that matter. The Act requires that there be these county-wide planning policies. Sort of off to the right there, you see the box that says interlokal agreements. That's, that's the nuts and bolts as to how do we work with the county to implement, say, the things that come out of the policies? But you've got to have the policies, obviously, to give us that framework for that coordinated planning. That flows down into our comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan should help us with that framework or meet that framework. Off to the side, you see the concepts of joint planning area and urban growth area. Both of those are integral to all of these concepts that we've been talking about. And then ultimately, down at the bottom of the screen are the development regulations. And those are the things that flow out of the comprehensive plan. That's what lets us get things built, right, and to what standards. So again, just sort of to give you the conceptual framework that we're working underneath. Just a quick, sort of fun graphic to remind you that we're not in this alone, right? The county is the agency that has the responsibility to make sure we get these things done. They've got to work with not only Oak Harbor, but they've got to work with Coopville and Langley as well. Some things apply well in all three jurisdictions and other things don't. So you'll see things in here that you may say to yourself, "Well, why do I care about a rural analysis?" Well, the county has to care about it, and we need to have them in the policies. That's why that broader language is there. And this is the nuts and bolts, right? This is what we're talking about. I don't know if, no. I'll just stand up for just a quick second. So the pale yellow area, of course, is the area within the city limits, right? And we know that. This line here gives us the line of the urban growth area. The pale purple in here are those areas which are inside of our urban growth area but are still in unincorporated island counties. So they still have the jurisdictional permitting and regulatory responsibilities, but we have joint planning responsibilities. The area outside of that urban growth area boundary should refer to as the joint planning area. That's been around ever since we've had county-wide planning policies, since we've had our comprehensive plan. But really, it's lacked a lot of structure in terms of how do we think about what happens in that joint planning area? How do the city and the county coordinate our thoughts and our actions in that area? I mean, we've always had kind of the idea that that was important, but we didn't have a lot of structure in our, in our previous set of policies, ones prior to 2016. That changed when we, when you adopted them a year ago. And so the relationship between city, urban growth area, joint planning area, and county, those are the things that all of these, all of these policies revolve around. How do we decide whether the UGA is big enough to accommodate the population projection? How do we know if we have enough capacity for housing units to be built? How do we decide which lands might be reasonable to bring into the urban growth area should we need the additional capacity? How do we help decide which lands we should never think about bringing in to the urban setting because they have too much importance to the rural setting? That's what we're trying to provide some, some detail to and some meat to with these revisions. So, real quick summary of amendments. And there was actually a very good matrix that the county staff prepared that we put into your packets that really listed very clearly for you the different types of revisions which were being made and why they're being made. So I won't attempt to cover all those for you this afternoon, but they fall into probably three really big categories. One is in the area of definitions. Great suggestion from them. Let's make the definitions have greater consistency with RCWs and the Growth Management Act. That makes a lot of sense. We're not blazing our own trail, or we're lining up with things that are already used elsewhere. Joint planning area, you see a lot of fine-tuning to the categories. How do we, do we talk about that different land? The old categories, look at my notes, used to call them potential growth area and areas of long-term rural significance. Those may be sent sort of unintended messages, and so we've got some new labels for those areas that really talk about it more in terms of being priority growth areas. And then sort of another category. Some clarification on criteria in terms of how do we look at those joint planning, those categories within the joint planning areas? And then for the UGAs and the buildable land analysis, really, it's a fine-tuning of the methodology, and I think this was a phrase that the county coined. It was sort of ground-truthing. We want to make the model for the capacity analysis really fit our community a little better than what it did. Want to make sure we're using reasonable market factors, and so you'll see some, some fine-tuning language in there. Some additional thoughts, let's see. There are some changes in the appendix that helps us with some definitions and assumptions and methodologies, again, all going back to the land capacity analysis. And also some clarification on when we can undertake a review of the urban growth area outside of the state-mandated eight-year cycle. So we, in 2016, we built in the concept that, you know, we look at this on a, on a, on a set schedule, but there may be some occurrences that pop up when you don't want to wait that whole time, and you need to look at something sooner rather than later. We've got some, we've put some, a process into place for that mid-cycle review. We've added some clarity to that language. Where do we go from here? We're working right now on reviewing, I think, what's the final draft? I think I just got a new email from Beverly yesterday with what they believe is the final draft. We have our briefing with you now. We need some additional comments if we're going to have any. We've got to get them into the county pretty soon. Planning Commission, we briefed last night. We hope to have a public hearing with them at their July meeting, and we would be back to you at your July workshop, looking for action in that setting on these revised policies. I know that's a lot of information. There's a lot of detail in here. Probably, well, not probably, I'd be happy to help you with any questions you have today or after you've had time to read them. If you want to give me a call or stop by, I certainly can chat with you about them as well, if there are specific questions that you have. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you. Could you pull up the map, please? Just kind of a general question. I know we've talked briefly about this, I think, both Mr. Powers, Mr. Merriman, I've talked to you. When do we consider, if we look at our, well, even our city limits, I've had this conversation, our city limits extend way out to the east, which is all federal land. What processes does the city do we go through to look at some of these areas? Whether it's either reducing city limits, areas that we will not build, you know, because of the accident, potential zone, or the JPA that's not really probably going to go to the north? When do we look at ceding those areas, if that's the correct term, back to the county and looking for areas that we would possibly be better utilized for our growth needs? Is that a process that we do? How often?
Well, I think it's, I think that it's timely and we could have those conversations right now. At the staff level, we've been talking about this for some time, and originally, we thought, well, you know, maybe, because there are some limitations to any kind of growth in this particular area from our perspective, we thought maybe we should squish it down, right? And sort of squeeze the balloon and maybe expand the joint planning area somewhere else. But then there was a good comment, and I think it did come from the county, which was, you know, while it may not be appropriate for certain kinds of growth, there may still be reasons why we want to jointly think about and plan a particular area. So maybe we'd both be better served by not taking something out of the joint planning area up there, but let's think about where do we really need potentially to enlarge in the joint planning area for our future growth needs? And so we've had some back and forth at the county. We've actually, in our comment letter that we sent a month or so ago, the city staff asked the county if, that this would be, or we suggested this would be a good time to talk about amending the JPA boundary. So I think we could continue that conversation, and we could certainly send that message forward to the county via resolution, because ultimately, what we'll ask you to do is approve a resolution, adopting the amended policies. We could include some language in there, sort of officially conveying that sentiment.
So if I, if I'm thinking traditionally more residential, you're saying the county said, "Hey, let's keep talking because there might be uses, commercial or light industrial that it makes sense to have."
Or not even land uses. Maybe there are just some, some, some planning thoughts. Maybe it's transportation. Maybe it's some other environmental issue that both of us have an interest in. Maybe it's open space, right? I mean, there, while we tend to focus a lot on, on the growth side of urban growth areas and joint planning areas, it's, it's much broader than that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? So when will we actually know what the joint planning area consists of?
Well, the way I would envision that, Mayor, is, again, we've sent the, the message at the staff level that we think it's time for us to look at it. If the council wants to send more of the legislative message, we can do that through a resolution. Then we would, we would have those conversations with the county staff, right? Think about what are those areas that might want to be part of the joint planning area? And then, much like this process, develop a map that says, here's, here's where it could go, and then we would have our respective review processes with our planning commissions and the county commissioners and the council, ultimately ending up in a, potentially, a new map. So step one, I think, is to send that, that official request, and then the rest of those steps just fall into place.
Anything else? Anything else? I guess. Done? If we're adjourned? Council comments?
Sure. Sure. Yeah. I didn't.
Okay, then we will go for regular city council.
I think a point on the television channel. Television Channel 10, the city of Oak Harbor government, it's now showing Mount Vernon County government access. And Channel 21, which is the Oak Harbor School District educational channel, is now showing the Skagit County government. Has there been change on the Comcast contract?
No.
I don't think the public is interested in the Mount Vernon, Skagit County.
So, Mayor Poten, where did that, where did that come from?
It's showing now on those channels. Channel 10 and Channel 21.
Do they have Comcast?
I think we have contract with Comcast to show city government.
No, no, no. The person that's saying that, do they have Comcast?
You know, it's, it's just showing.
Do you have Comcast on your television?
Oh, yeah. Comcast, television.
Okay. So we should, like Frontier or something?
Yeah, we have Comcast, sorry.
We'll look into that, and thanks for listening.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Mayor Poten?
That's all.
Okay. Anything? Seeing no further comments, we'll call this meeting again. Good night.
Thank you.